Good evening, I'd like to call to order the January fourteenth meeting. Clerk would please read the roll.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present in quorum.
At this time, we will have a moment of meditation and the pledge to the flag. Does anyone have someone that we'd like to remember at this time? Vice President Spatafor.
Yeah, I just ask the council to keep the family of David Kosicek in their memories this evening. His mother passed away recently. I know they're a fixture in this community.
Thank you. All right, if we could please rise. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of January seventh.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the approval of the printed council proceedings for January seventh, two thousand and nineteen.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign, passes unanimously.
And we are to special ceremonies. We have a tribute in recognition of the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Commission on their annual luncheon.
And if we could have the commission members come forward and the mayor, and we will talk about the celebration for Monday. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yep. It's that, it's that time again, are we on? Okay, it's that time again for the Martin Luther King Celebration Luncheon. This will be the thirty-fourth year for the luncheon in this community, and it is something that we look forward to every year to remember the legacy of Martin Luther King. Also, behind us and around us are the commissioners that have worked very hard over the years to make sure that this is a successful, excuse me, a successful event. With that, the mayor has a few words, and then we'll pass the resolution.
All right. Well, this is my second year getting to do this here at council, so I feel like it's old hat now. This is, I'm experienced. You know, this is always, it's always a lot of fun to go and to see everybody show up. It's always powerful to hear the words that are said. This year, we have an incredible speaker. We have a proclamation, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but you know, we're talking about the commission and how proud we are of this commission, about the event. This is the longest and the biggest every year. We're proud of that. We continue to talk about that. Governor Lawrence Douglas Wilder is going to be there, so we are excited to hear his words. And then the proclamation I have, you know, the fun part for me is, is I get to say, "Now, therefore I, Andy Shore, Mayor of the City of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim Monday, January twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day in Lansing, and I encourage all Lansing residents to spend this day in reflection of Dr. King's selfless advocacy and timeless legacy." So, we will proclaim that. Again, that's, this is fun for me, but all the people behind me, they do all the hard work. They are workers, they are, I'm very, very proud of this commission, this Lansing, East Lansing Cooperative. So, I appreciate the time, and I appreciate everything that everyone behind me is doing, and I hope to see everybody at the Lansing Center on Monday.
Okay, and with that, we have the resolution from council, and Vice President Spatafor, I move the resolution.
Thank you, Madam President. The resolution has been moved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
Great, and so, if we could have some of the commission members say a few words? Are you going to be the lead?
Sure.
All right.
This actually goes to you. There you go. You get to.
Thank you so very much. I am always honored to be here. As a member of this commission, it, I hope it never gets lost on me, the legacy that was left to me. And I know that all of these people standing behind me really should be standing in front of me because of the tireless work that they do all year long to promote Dr. King's legacy and to make certain that the event that we do in Lansing continues to outdo and outpace what we've done before. So, I love to tell people, I love to brag about what we do. I get to say every year that we are the longest established continuously operating commission in the country honoring Dr. King, and we have the largest luncheon event in the country honoring Dr. King. So, this year, we will beat last year's record, and us and sixteen hundred people are going to go have lunch and enjoy the melodic sounds of Pastor Donnie McClurklin and hear an inspirational message from America's first ever elected African-American governor of a state, L. Douglas Wilder. I would love to be able to have the opportunity to present the commission to you and to council because of all of the work that they do. I get to brag about how amazing we are, but I also get to brag about the people that are in this community who support the work that we do year-round. So, thank you Lansing, thank you East Lansing, thank you Michigan for supporting the work of the commission, and we'll see you on Monday. But, I want to introduce and let everyone have an opportunity to see our amazing commission. And so, we have here with us Dr. Lee June, standing beside him and in back of him, Randy Telfaro, we have Commissioner James McCourtis, our secretary Anthony Winston, behind him, Nicole Noel Williams, Commissioner Lonnie Lee, Commissioner Rosa Moss-Harbro, Commissioner Denise Maybell, Commissioner Kelly Ellsworth-Epperson, behind her, Commissioner Mike Flower, always really quiet. But then when he does talk, Commissioner Steve Jaffe, who is our acting treasurer.
Not as quiet.
Not as quiet. Commissioner Geraldine Potter, who many of you know in the community is one of our champions for our essay and scholarship, who rallies the troops and have, and brings folks in to help with that effort every year. And I think that's all of us that are here tonight, so thank you.
Speaking of the scholarship, I want to thank the, all of the members here. For those who don't know in the audience, the day the scholarship was due was a snow day in the city of Lansing at least. So, I know we had a lot of conversation, I did, my kids were in the schools, they wanted to turn in the essays, and we wanted to make sure that the kids would get a chance. The fine folks behind me agreed to push the day back past, I believe it was past the weekend or into that next Tuesday because of the snow day. So, our kids all got a chance to submit the essays, they work really hard on it. The folks behind us, of course, and the folks at Sinarra were very, very open and willing to work with our schools. So, I thought that was a really good result, so thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And if you'd like to go up and shake councilmembers' hands, please do that. Again, we want to thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much. Did anybody? Wants me to tell you about tickets, but kind of we don't have any, but you should call, you should, you should, you should call the East Lansing Hannah Community Center at three-three-three-two-five-eight-zero and see, when I left, they had eight tickets. But, we still have a few hours to play with, so if you really, really want to come, just reach out to us and we'll see if we can make sure you get there. Thank you.
The person was everywhere.
How you doing? How you doing?
Good.
You too? How are you doing?
I'm good.
Hey, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, good to see you again.
And. Hell yeah. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Sweet kid. Thank you.
And thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
See you Monday. Or Sunday.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, sir, thank you. Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
Oh, not a problem.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. Hi, thank you.
Oh, thank you, that's nice.
Yes. Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
I got the door open for you. One way.
Well, no, I'm fine, I don't know.
Just thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
All right, do we have any councilmember comments? Yes, Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few announcements in regard to the Allen Neighborhood Center. First off, I want to announce that their breadbasket program is every Tuesday from one PM to five PM. The address is sixteen-twenty-nine East Kalamazoo Street. They distribute free bread to area residents. Sometimes they have locally grown produce. You do not need, you can't hear me? Okay. It's every Tuesday, one to five, they distribute free bread to area residents. Occasionally, they have locally grown produce and other food items. You do not need to show proof of income or residency. If you need bread, please just go to the Allen Neighborhood Center. The other thing is, is the Allen Farmer's Market is indoors every Wednesday, again at sixteen-twenty-nine East Kalamazoo Street. This is from three PM to six-thirty PM. They always feature locally grown, raised, and prepared foods. This is, this is a great market. If you have an opportunity to go, try to get there between three and six-thirty PM on Wednesday. The last thing in regard to the Allen Neighborhood Center, they have recently purchased the actual building where they are. They purchased the entire building. It's been quite a feat. On the lower level, they have done renovations, which now is office space, separate offices. I toured it the other day, they're really nice. They are going for three hundred dollars a month. That includes all utilities and Wi-Fi. So, if you know anybody that's looking for an office space, I would ask you to contact the Allen Neighborhood Center, and they will be available for occupancy February first. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to announce our first two thousand and nineteen Fourth Ward Constituent Contact Meeting, every fourth Saturday of the month. So, the next one is this month on the twenty-sixth. The location is Gregory's. It's a restaurant that, at that time, from ten AM to twelve, it has breakfast available. I look forward to meeting anybody, especially people who are interested in the Fourth Ward. We don't usually have a formal agenda, but I'm looking to, we talk about anything Fourth Ward related, including budget priorities, things that you, projects you would like to see done, looking for some good Fourth Ward projects to try to promote. So, that's this month on the twenty-sixth, every fourth Saturday, ten AM, Gregory's Restaurant, which is twenty-five-ten North MLK. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
I first want to say thank you to the constituents that came out to our constituent contact meeting this past Saturday at the Alfred Schmitt Southside Community Center. We had, as always, just a fantastic turnout, had a very good discussion in terms of two thousand and eighteen reflecting back on, and then really, you know, talking about prioritization when we talk about energy and efforts into two thousand and nineteen. So, again, I want to thank folks that came out this past Saturday. We meet each second Saturday at the Alfred Schmitt Southside Community Center, and so if you're interested in February's meeting, that will be February ninth, ten to twelve noon, again at five-eight-two-five Wise Road. Also, I'd like to announce Lansing, I'm sorry, Luton Rich Neighborhood Association Meeting. That meeting will take place this Thursday, which is January seventeenth at seven PM. About mid, about mid-year last year, they shifted the location of their meetings from Dwight Rich Academy to the Mayflower Congregational Church at two-nine-zero-one West Mount Hope. So, they actually meet now in the social room at two-nine-zero-one West Mount Hope at the church. And so, again, that is this Thursday, seven PM. Patty Farhat and the association would love to see you if you're curious with regards to the boundaries, the boundaries are for this association. North is West Mount Hope, east Pleasant Grove, to the south is Victor Avenue, and then to the west is Deerfield Avenue. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you on behalf of so many for the donations that came in for the Beacon Southwest Project. And I've talked a lot about this at this day, so I won't belabor the project in general, but I just wanted to say thank you. We had a goal of fifty thousand dollars to commence construction of Phase Two in the spring of this project. This is a project off Simkin Drive situated over in southwest Lansing, and really the goal is to create what is kind of a comprehensive park project. And as the mayor opened up Beacon Field December tenth, we actually commenced this crowdfunding effort at that point. Very, very difficult to ask people at that time of year to donate funds going into the holiday season. And so, I don't think we really got aggressive with the ask until after the holiday season. And we ended up with fifty-one thousand three hundred and nine dollars. That came through one hundred and sixty-three respective donations. Donations were as small as five dollars and as much as ten thousand dollars. They came in from individuals and families and neighborhood associations, small businesses, nonprofits, larger corporations. I mean, it was just amazing to see, particularly those last four or five days, I think fifteen thousand dollars came in over the last four or five days through, I think, sixty respective donations. So, there was a huge push right there at the end, and folks just could not be happier in terms of the broad-based support that, that we saw for this project. This would not be possible without the planners and the primary advocates. So, have to thank Scott Dane from the Capital Area Soccer League, David Weiner from the Southside Community Coalition, Andrea Crawford from the city's administration, along with so many other folks from the city's administration, the Inglewood County Health Department, the Lansing School District, Southwest Action Group, Rejuvenating South Lansing, and just so many others that were involved with the advocacy, the planning, and things of that nature. And I just cannot wait to see what this particular project looks like, and I know that it's going to advance the community over in southwest Lansing, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on that project. It's amazing. On the same note, as South Lansing, I'm just going to announce that the South Lansing Farmer's Market normally holds weekly markets during the summer, but during the winter, they're also holding monthly pop-ups. And we know that our community is full of neighbors who grow and bake and can and pickle and stitch and paint and design and build and repurpose amazing things, and this is a good venue for folks to sell any homegrown handmade items, cottage foods, prepared foods, Lansing grown, Lansing made, that's what it focuses on. And the pop-ups are going to be on the first Saturdays in February and March. Both of those are on the second, so February second and March second. They're from ten to three, and they are at Saint Casmer, which is on Barnes Avenue in the Morris Park neighborhood. The market manager is Kathy Toby, and you can reach her at market@southlansing.org. You can email her, or you can call the office at five-one-seven-three-seven-four-fifty-seven-hundred. Again, anybody in the community that makes, bakes, does anything that they would like to showcase, selling, it could be fabric crafts, home decor, foods, candles, anything that you make, we're trying to highlight what's locally made. Lansing made, Lansing grown. And you can follow the progress for this on Facebook, you can like it on Facebook to find out more, or you can get apps online at southlansing.org. Thanks.
Back to Councilmember Hussein.
Sorry, I forgot to thank, and I don't know how I forgot to thank this individual, Chris Klein with the Lansing Economic Area Partnership. There are just a ton of things taking place at the Pleasant Grove and Holmes intersection, and Chris is behind just about every one of them. And so, he has just been a tremendous advocate over there on behalf of LEAP, but he is also a resident of the Colonial Village Neighborhood Association, so he's also a southwest Lansing resident. So, again, thank you to Chris Klein and all of his efforts as well.
Are there any other council comments at this time? Seeing none, we go back to the clerk.
Thank you, President Wood. I don't have any announcements, so I'll roll right into the opportunity for members of the public to make community event announcements. If you have any community events, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details. And seeing no one jumping to their feet, I'll announce the registration cutoff for public comment on both legislative matters and show cause hearings. Legislative matters tonight, it's the blue sign-in sheet in the back if you want to address any of the scheduled public hearings or any of the items listed under the consent agenda or the ordinance for introduction. Need you to jump up and get signed in in the next few moments. If you want to speak on one of the show cause hearings, and that is limited to interested parties who received a notice from the city or their agent with written permission, that's the green sign-in form, that's related to the make, save, or demolish. Again, if you need to sign in to speak to one of those make, save, or demolish orders, need you to jump up right away. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you. I was going to mention Beacon, but I think Councilman Hussein did a great job. The only person, when you start listing people, you always forget someone. Cameron Gannas, who was fantastic, and actually told me that his son tried to come there and play soccer, and it was packed, so he had to go to Ferris, and I was like, that's a great problem to have. But, really, congratulations, that is fantastic for southwest Lansing. We were there that evening, and people were really excited. Staying on the South Lansing theme, for those who don't know, we reopened an ice rink at Washington Park, which, yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun. I went down there, I was on skates, I was not balanced as much as I really thought I should be, but, but I was able to do the skating. But, if you, if you remember the days of having an open-air ice rink at Washington Park and many other places around the city, we've reopened it. It's very basic, it's a sheet of ice with a, with kind of a little border. I think next year, we're going to try and make it a little bigger. We're not renting skates, there's no warming center, the bathrooms are open, it is lit until ten PM. We hope to rectify the skates at some point, maybe we'll try and do a skate exchange or something like that, but we figured, let's put some ice down and see if people, you know, let's flood a park and see if people want to skate there, and the response that I have heard so far has been tremendous. So, I'm glad that we could do that for the citizens of Lansing, and hopefully we can do more as we go, but, you know, low cost, high value. So, Washington Park, if anybody's interested. Weather permit, weather conditions, it's, it's up to weather conditions. So, if you go there and it's a forty-degree day and you're seeing holes in the ice, my apologies, but it's a forty-degree day, so you're welcome. But, it's always weather, weather conditions permitting, but, but it's still, it was a lot of fun to be there. Otherwise, the City of Lansing Neighborhood Grants and Neighborhoods in Bloom applications are due on February first, and there's a neighborhood grant workshop this Thursday at six-thirty PM at the Foster Community Center, and I've already heard from a lot of people who are applying for the neighborhood grants, and that's great, that's the money we want to get out into our neighborhoods. On Friday, this coming Friday at noon, is the Martin Luther King Junior Thirty-Ninth Annual Memorial Observance here in this chamber. The, this year's theme is be the change you wish to see in the world. We just saw the presentation. On Saturday, we'll be having our City of Lansing Mobile Food Pantry. It's at Saint Gerard's School over on West Willow, so that's, that will be there from nine AM till eleven AM or until the food runs out. Also on Saturday is the Thirteenth Annual Cardboard Classic Sled Race at Guyer Park, which should be a whole lot of fun. Registration's at one, and the races start at two. And then, our teen nights at Lansing Parks and Rec Community Centers, we have Tuesdays at the Schmidt and Letts Center from six-thirty to eight-thirty, Wednesdays at Foster from six-thirty to eight-thirty, Fridays at Guyer from six to seven-thirty. They're free, and students have to bring school ID or proof of enrollment, and that's what we've got going on.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add on to the celebration here in the chamber. There are no tickets required, it's free and open to the public, and the chamber is usually open around eleven-thirty, so the program lasts, we try to keep it an hour so that people can get something to eat and then go back to work. The other is, we will not be having another council meeting until the twenty-eighth, and Rejuvenating South Lansing has their meeting on January twenty-second. That is also at the Alfred Schmitt Southside Community Center in Sandy Allen Room, and that's at six-thirty. And Barb Kimmel from our development office will be there to speak about things going on at the Pleasant Grove area, what's going on there, along with development opportunities if you're looking at home repairs and a number of those types of things. So, with that, clerk.
Okay, thank you. We are to the show cause hearings. We have two show cause hearings, one in consideration of orders to make, save, or demolish, twenty-five-hundred West Jolly Road, and the other in consideration of orders to make, save, or demolish, fourteen-fourteen Ballard.
And with that, I'll go to Councilmember Hussein to explain the hearings.
All right, so pertaining to twenty-five-hundred West Jolly Road, the owner is Maurice Randall. The original red tag date was December fifth, two thousand and seventeen. This was submitted into the make, save, or demolish program, six-twenty-nine of two thousand and eighteen. This particular property's been vacant for more than a hundred and eighty days. The estimated cost of repairs, seventy-two thousand dollars, does exceed the state equalized value of twenty thousand dollars. The demo board had a show cause hearing on August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. The owner was a no-show. Again, we took a look at this in public safety in December, the owner was a no-show as part of that process, and to date, no permits have been pulled. This would also be a sixty-day make, save, or demolish order, as this is not a fire damage structure.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers?
We do not have any speakers signed in for the show cause hearings.
Okay, these items will be taken up at the public safety meeting in February.
Okay, so we're to public comment on legislative matters, and again, that includes the consent agenda ordinance for introduction in the following public hearings. Number one, Z-five-two thousand eighteen, one-thirty-six East Malcolm X Street and a vacant parcel to its east, rezoning from DM four residential and J. Parking Districts to G-one Business Districts. Number two, Z-six-two thousand eighteen, five-twenty-two Leisure Place, rezoning from DM three residential district to D-one Professional Office Districts. And number three, Z-seven-two thousand eighteen, two vacant lots at the northeast corner of West Cavanaugh Road and Locroft Avenue, rezoning from A Residential District to C Residential Districts.
Councilmember Hussein.
All right, so the first public hearing deals with one-thirty-six East Malcolm X Street. This is a little bit better than two and a half acres of land situated across the street, so east of the Lansing Border Water and Light Substation that's being built at the old Scott Park.
And then with regards to 1414 Ballard, the owners are Douglas J. Brockway and RAL Realty. Their original red tag date was July 12th, 2018. Because of the condition of this particular property, it was actually submitted into the make, save, or demolish process the next day. This has been vacant for more than 180 days at this point. The estimated cost of repairs, $72,000, does exceed the state equalized value of $20,000. The demo board had a show cause hearing on August 23rd, 2018. The owner was a no-show. Again, we took a look at this in public safety in December, the owner was a no-show as part of that process, and to date, no permits have been pulled. This would also be a 60-day make, save, or demolish order as this is not a fire damage structure.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers?
We do not have any speakers signed in for the show cause hearings.
Okay, these items will be taken up at the public safety meeting in February.
Okay, so we're to public comment on legislative matters, and again, that includes the consent agenda ordinance for introduction in the following public hearings. Number one, Z5 2018, 136 East Malcolm X Street and a vacant parcel to its east, rezoning from DM4 Residential and J. Parking Districts to G1 Business Districts. Number two, Z6 2018, 522 Leisure Place, rezoning from DM3 Residential District to D1 Professional Office Districts. And number three, Z7 2018, two vacant lots at the northeast corner of West Cavanaugh Road and Locroft Avenue, rezoning from A Residential District to C Residential Districts.
Councilmember Hussein.
All right, so the first public hearing deals with 136 East Malcolm X Street. This is a little bit better than two and a half acres of land situated across the street, so east of the Lansing Border Water and Light Substation that's being built at the old Scott Park site. The applicant in this case is Rio Gate, sorry, Rio Gateway LLC and Funk Zone Investors. We actually have those individuals on hand, we had them back, when we actually set the hearing, I think it was December 10th, we had them here, they did promise to have a presentation, they do have that presentation, so I'm gonna invite that team down. I think I see Gina Paluzzi as well with the land bank, I don't know if she's going to be coming down or not. Okay, the land bank does own this particular property, there's a purchase agreement in place, and so we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Few of the particulars for this particular site, this would not be a spot zone, there is G1 Business zoning category to the north. The master plan designates this for mixed use, so the proposed zoning would advance that, that aspect of the master plan. And the reason for the request is explained in our last, or as part of our last process, is that this development team essentially needs options at this particular site. There's a number of issues when you, when you talk about, they, they had actually spoken to the fact that they thought this at one point was a, was a, what you call a greenfield, but in fact, it is not. There needs to be riverbank stabilization, there's issues with kind of walls underneath the ground, there were issues with some of the foundations from the old buildings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So again, this would provide them with some options. So without further ado, I'm gonna open up the floor to Mr. Brent Forsberg and Jeff DeHaan.
With the green lights on, you're good to go.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you for having us back, and as promised, we've put together a presentation, it should be up on the screens here shortly.
There we go.
All right. So, at State, I'm Brent Forsberg, and this is Jeff DeHaan. We're with Urban Systems, which is the development company for Rio Gateway LLC. It's a wholly owned entity underneath of, of this development company that we put together. We're excited too, as mentioned, Gina from the land bank, and David Burns, their real estate manager, is also here with us this evening, so any questions that come up afterwards or during, we'll be more than happy to answer. Quick background, Urban Systems came together with three developers and a lot of key stakeholders under the mission of building vibrant communities. And we do that through our vision of building a collaboration with public officials, local stakeholders, residents, and working with our team to create spaces that are exciting for people to live and work in. And we do that through smart collaborative, sustainable growth that creates a sense of place and promotes community engagement, which is the core of, of what we do. Everything that we're doing comes from that lens of, of how do we build better community engagement, and how do we build that real sense of fulfillment and well-being in the neighborhoods and then across the region where we're working. So the site we're talking about this evening is 112 and 136 Malcolm X, the former Deluxe Insight. Just for the record, to show where it is, it's between 496 Malcolm X and the River at the corner of Washington. This idea came together from a two-year study our team's been working on of how do we build these better connections, and it started with an initiative with Tri County three and a half years ago called Imagine Mid Michigan. One of the areas that we targeted in on was between the Central Business District of downtown Lansing and Rio Town to make one of these areas to rebuild the connection that 496 took away when it came through the city. The first document that we looked at was Lansing's Design Lansing Plan, and what really caught our eye was Lansing's vision to be the best economically, environmentally, and socially sustainable city of its size in the Midwest by 2030. And we looked at the different zones inside of the master plan, and the area downtown was labeled to become the regional hub for, for the Tri County area. And we looked at a lot of the areas supporting that, that are the different districts that were laid out in the plan. So taking a look at the map, this is where, oh, I'm sorry, can we jump forward? I forgot to raise my hand, one slide?
He went back.
That's, that's back, okay.
There.
Yeah, so this was the slide, I forgot to raise my hand, my fault, I'm, I'm doing the presentation.
Yes, here.
So this was the Design Lansing Plan and the vision to be premier Midwest city by 2030. All right. Here's the map that we started looking at, which, where the purple are at the top of the map, the one that's in the center is one of Jeff's previous projects that stabilized, and then the other one that's over to the right side on my screen is the Wing, which we met with you guys on October and December of last year, and we're finishing up the plans on right now. So the area that we're focused on this evening are the green spots that are on both sides We started with taking a look at what, what are the neighborhoods that are stabilized in and around this area right now? So if we say the Central Business District, generally, people are going to have an idea of where that is and what part of Lansing that is. The East Side Neighborhood Associations people are gonna be able to identify that. The Stadium District, LCC in Rio Town. And we said, okay, as, as we look at that, how do we make this a more walkable and connected with other forms of multimodal transportation, using assets like the trails that run through here, using some of the side streets that get under I-96, or 496, without being Cedar Street or Pennsylvania, which is very transit-heavy? So you've got roads like Hosmer, and you have South Street that makes the connection from Rio Town over to Hazel and Hosmer Street. And looking at, as we come up around the North Side, Chiawasi, and, and making connections between the residential that's kind of surrounding the Central Business District and LCC and the employment centers around it. So really looking at the traffic patterns and looking at how do we encourage more movement between that with the barriers of the river and the highway and the heavily automobile-operated roads like Cedar Street. One of the areas that we keyed in on was Washington Avenue. It really is Lansing's, Lansing's walkable street, but it's the region's walkable street. And some of you I'm sure have heard me mention before about Silverbells, and that tens of thousands of people are downtown, there's not a single car allowed on Washington Avenue at that point, but yet people are there, they're not complaining about having to walk a few blocks to get there, the retail businesses, it's one of their busiest nights of the year, because people are down there for an intended purpose. So as we started looking at what could be in this area to build that connection and continue fostering that idea, we picked the eight, or the 800 block or 112 Malcolm X and the 600 block as our two key points that we had to create that sense of presence coming into the downtown. Because that's, when people are coming into the downtown, especially if it's their first time or they're not familiar with it, those are the first impressions that they get when they get off the highway. So they're beginning to make that connection, what is Lansing and what is this area of town? So we said that we have to come up with something, and these are key components to this overall plan that we've been working on. This map defines the area where, where we've put a lot of our efforts in trying to generate connections, and you can see that first dot above what says Midtown Gateway, where the point comes in, that is an eight-minute walk from the corner of Michigan and Washington. So from a distance of walkability and creating another central focal point, that, that's a key strategic area, because generally, people are willing to walk about five to six minutes from one district to the other without getting back into a car. So we're right in that, that kind of distance, you know, if you're walking a little bit faster, you can get there, but again, at a regular pace, you're at right around eight minutes. So for us, it offers the opportunity there to start another one of these zones that create life, having some mix of commercial, having the mix of residential, and then again, using the 112 Malcolm X site across the highway to put some scale there to minimize the impact of the highway and begin to make that cross back down to Rio Town. So with the site, this is its current condition right now, it's where the, the Rio Town sign is, it's just north of the highway, or it's just south of the highway, just north of the river. The next site, slide, shows, we started with looking at what would maximum density be there under the G zoning. So we took a few different buildings, we looked at it from a residential standpoint, which is currently DM4, which would allow, with the acreage we have there, about 180 units. And then we looked at, if we had the commercial and residential mix, we would have to work out something with parking inside the buildings, because there wouldn't be enough surface there, but just to give an idea, what would be the maximum that we could have? Then we took a look at building design. So this was the original hotel design that, or the, actually the third iteration of the hotel design that we had, and how do we bring some life, how do we bring a sense of place? The top of the building has a lighted feature, so from the highway it can be seen coming from MLK, but also coming from the Cedar and Pennsylvania area as well, to, to bring something to draw the eyes up and into the city. And then we were happy with BWL and the art that they're putting on the building, because without the engagement of commercial storefront across the street, we need something that can create that sense of place and, and a destination. So the artwork is, is a good help with that, and this was what was approved that will be going on to the building. Here's some of the site designs that we've looked at. This was our original design that we had with the hotel group from June of 2018. So we're looking at having activation on the corner, having some type of restaurant, and then another portion of the building back along the river, so we were engaging both sides of the property. This gives you kind of a massing diagram of what that looked like and kind of what the scale would feel on the road with that design. Our hotel partner in visiting with us in July had changed the design that they wanted to see there, and working with the Planning and Development Office, we, in Community Development, we'd looked at pushing it up towards Malcolm X and having kind of the streetscape there, so it still forms that massing on the highway, and we're still working through that. Oh, sorry. So here's the design that I was just explaining, so we're looking through what can be there, how do we do the right thing for the city, how do we get that massing over the highway, but how do we engage the river too? So that's where we're at right now, which is why we're looking for the rezoning request, so that way we know what opportunities that we'll have available to give us the flexibility as we go through these designs in the next month and work with our team and designers, and also with the community in coming up with ideas. So the hotel is still something that we can be looking at, we do have a hotel partner, we asked him again last week, he's still committed to trying to do something there, but he's also, if we're looking at some type of mixed use or whatever that is, that we do have flexibility in this design. So for next steps, what we were, what we're looking at is we have tonight the public hearing, and we look forward to any feedback. We're also available afterwards to set up meetings to solicit feedback from the community, and then the potential of going to, back to committee on February 4th. And really, at that point, we'll take time to start working through, some of the concerns that we heard was not just having zoning without having a plan attached to it. So I think getting into those meetings, we can really start working through what this is going to be as we're working through our overall plan for this section of Lansing. Other outstanding items that we have to work on is, once we have the feasible site plan, we're gonna be working with the land bank to, to work through the environmental issues there. So we have to come up with what that design's gonna look like, and then tailor what the plan's going to be, and we'll be working with the county and the city and LEAP on Then we'll be going back out to the community, we'll be reaching back out to Cherry Hill, we'll be reaching back out to Rio Town, and then also set up some more of a Coffee with the Developer meetings at different times throughout the day to solicit community feedback as part of the process. And then at that point, we expect to be back here in front of council to have a project that hopefully everybody is excited about at that point, and we have something that we can move forward with. So we thank you, we're here for questions, and we look forward to continuing working through the process on this.
Are there any questions from councilmembers? Vice President Spatafor.
Thanks, guys, for being here again. A quick question on the design, you showed two different versions, which one is the most up-to-date? The one with just the hotel on Malcolm X or the one with the, sort of the L-shaped property and three buildings on it?
The most current design was the one that was a straight building along Malcolm X, and then we still got a lot of work to do with that and, and working through how to better engage that building, though.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Dunbar, then Councilmember Garza.
Thank you. I, I know that it's been a priority for a lot of us to get mixed-use buildings on the river, as opposed to parking on the river. Is there a chance that you can do multi-level parking to take up less space than surface parking and put something that activates the riverfront on the south end? I, I was, I was juggling, I was gonna ask the same question, because I know that the new version is on, on the highway, but is there a way to mitigate parking and get something active on the river?
So we just completed our recent market demand study, and it was, to be able to fund a ramp that is servicing that property alone, the, the demand was a little light as far as the amount of units and the absorption to take down to be able to pay for that. It is something that we're, we're looking at close, and we are going to go back to the drawing board on, because our, our original intent was to have the activation on both sides of that and be able to put some parking with inside the building. So that, that's one of the models that we're looking at, we haven't found a feasible way to make that work yet.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. What's the hotel partner you guys are working with?
So it's a group out of California. They have, right now, a lot of Marriott brands inside of what they're managing, and he is a business partner with Westpac, which is the third, third partner in Urban Systems. Do you remember the name of the hotel group? I'm blanking on it right now.
It looks like an Aloft.
I apologize, I don't remember the name of the...
It looks like an Aloft or... AC to me.
So, the, the design of this was based off an Aloft, and that isn't the brand that Marriott would allow on the site, but they did say that in working, as we work through designs, as we're ready to go into that stage, if it ends up being solely a hotel site, that they would be flexible with us on the types of designs that they would allow, so it wouldn't look like a suburban hotel sitting in downtown.
They said that they would actually allow that exact same building design.
As long as it was a requirement of council to have a design that was more urban-related.
Same to me hotels, I recognize that immediately.
It's a Windsor Cap book.
All right. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. This is more a question maybe to the group. I just wonder have, first of all, I'm intrigued by activating that area, I think would be great for the city, especially if the plans, you know, play out the way it sounds like you guys are working towards, but have we ever approved, have we ever approved a rezon without a plan? Or like what? Just for precedent's sake, you know, for my information, kind of?
We have from time to time, but even with a plan, once a rezon is done, there is the potential that they might not get the funding, there's the potential that another partner comes in, and what we were led to believe we were approving it for might not happen. So that's always a risk that when we look at these, that we take, and it's why it's important to look at the track record of those that are doing the development and, and things like that, so.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So our next public hearing, Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so this is in consideration of Z6 2018, 522 Leisure Place. This is a rezon request for, I'm sorry, from DM3 Residential District to D1 Professional Office District. The applicant is NeoGen Corporation. This particular property is a registered rental at this point, it is owned by NeoGen. They actually use this property for visiting scientists, international guests, and things of that nature. What they would like to do, they have a number of properties in the area, they use those properties as office space, so they would like to continue using this for residential in terms of their guests and things of that nature, but they want to use the overflow place, or overflow space, sorry, for office. This would not be a spot zone, as there are a number of parcels in the area that are also D1 Professional Office. The master plan designates this, the subject property for medium-density residential, and I don't think we had anything additional from development and planning that we needed to address, okay? And then the last public hearing is in consideration of Z7 2018. This is for two vacant lots at the northwest corner of West Cavanaugh Road and Locroft Avenue. This is a rezon request to go from A Residential District to C Residential District. The applicant in this case is Andrew Pauli, and what he wants to do, if successful with the rezon, is actually combine the two parcels and, and build a duplex. There, there were a number of questions when we actually set the public hearing. I want to thank Susan Statuick, she did get to the, the bottom of the number, number of those questions. Number one, Councilwoman Spitzley brought forth a concern about the other duplexes in the area. This would not be a spot zone, there are a number of duplexes in the area and a number of C residential-y zone parcels. Andrew Pauli and his brother are... Andrew Pauli and his brother are a business team and they actually reside in East Lansing. They do not own any of those parcels that have fallen in disrepair within that neighborhood. The second question was from Councilwoman Washington and the, the question dealt with past practices of Mr. Andrew Pauli and his brother here in the city of Lansing. These are the only two parcels of land that they own in the city of Lansing, so we have no history on them in terms of their business practices as landowners. So, with that being said, I'd move the public hearings.
All right. Mr. Clerk. We have all, he's done all three. That's okay. That's all right. Not a problem.
All right. I thought there was one more. All right. Sorry, the only speaker we have tonight is Kathy Miles.
It's Miles.
Good evening. I support the zoning change for Leisure Place. NeoGen's done a lot for Lansing. I applaud the work being done to make the city and the International Fire Code compatible. And I just had a, a short comment about the new park coming to South Lansing in conjunction with Beacon Two that the committee is partnering with Peckham and they're going to be working to bring the first wheelchair swing to Lansing. I think that's really exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are to the referral of the show cause hearings. Number one, 2500 West Ballard Road.
And that will go back to public safety?
Number two, 1414 Ballard.
And that will also go back to public safety.
And then, the public hearings. Number one, Z5 2018.
Development and planning.
Number two, Z6 2018.
Development and planning.
And number three, Z7 2018.
Development and planning.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I would like to remove from the consent agenda items 2A, B, C, and 3A. Those are the claim dispositions and the setting of the public hearing for the Townsend ramp. And then, we've already taken care of 1A.
All right, thank you.
Okay. That leaves no items on the consent agenda, so we are to resolutions by the Committee on General Services.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. The first one is for Claim Appeal Number 1611, which is 600 Jessup. This, this property has been red-tagged since September of 2017 and, and, and has had at least four trash violations since that time. The, the main issue here is, I'm sorry, yes, the main issue here is that the owner of the property is not doing the repairs that he's supposed to do, but this one now is for trash. He claims, the, the property owner claimed that the tenant was supposed to pay the fees and we explained to him that because he was the owner of record, he was really responsible for paying the fees. What we suggested to him that if his tenant was inclined to pay, that they go to the Treasury's, Treasury Office downstairs and see if they can make an arrangement for some sort of payment, but until such time, he is responsible because he is the owner of record. With that, I move that we deny his claim of $2,537.
Okay, and then, we'll go back up to...
Which one did I miss? Oh, my!
That's okay.
I'm, I'm reading.
We're good.
I'm reading the minutes, so I apologize for that.
No, no, that's fine. So, you're good, you've moved that?
Yeah.
Are there any questions or concerns on, on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Now, back up to A.
Thank you, Madam President. This is for Claim Appeal Number 1592, 915 Vine Street. The owner at this ti, the owner did not speak English and we spoke through an interpreter. He, this is for a mowing fee, mowing claim. The owner was a little confused because he stated that he had mowed the lawn, but we came and we checked two weeks later and we told him that it's perfectly, you know, that grass grows fast and that it's, you know, you may have mowed the lawn on, I think he said, the 19th, but when the contractor came on 6/22, he said he mowed it on the 29th. I'm sorry, six days after the contractor came and actually mowed the lawn. And so, he was questioning whether or not he should be charged because he claimed he mowed the lawn on 6/29. And so, we, we explained to him that he, he did in fact owe the money, that we did in fact mow on, on June 22nd. And, you know, at the, at the end of the day, he did admit that he did mow it on the 29th and it was possible that, you know, the contractor came on the 22nd and the grass had grown in two, in seven days. And so, the claim, he, he apologized and it was over. So, we moved that we deny the claim in the amount of $395.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Now, down to C.
Thank you, Madam President. The final claim is for Claim 1594 on 2319 Green Belt. Mr. Sanford talked about that the, the owner was cited on 518 with a compliance date of 5/25, but Mr. Maxwell stated to the committee that, you know, he first stated that his, his tenant had mowed it, but then he talked that he did not get timely notice and that there was some, some questions with the, the proper address. He, he provided a copy of the letter he got in the mail with an invoice that wasn't addressed to his property, wasn't, wasn't his property, but a property on Massachusetts, a totally different property. And so, you know, we talked about it and we admitted and acknowledged that it appeared the notices were written on multiple addresses. And so, as a result, we did approve his claim for $330. So, I move the resolution.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the claim. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley.
And we are to the Committee of the Whole.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I would, we're going to move a resolution to set the public hearing in consideration of the sale of the Townsend Parking Ramp for January 28th at 7:00 PM. The details of this, the city attorney went over quite lengthy, but for the public's edification, we're looking at selling the Townsend Ramp to the Michigan Senate for $18 million, 13 of which will be placed into escrow to pay off the bonds that are still outstanding, the two sets of bonds that are still outstanding on that piece of property. There's a complicated real estate transfer process that the city attorney explained to allow for a substitution in our lease for the TIFA, which is the Tax Increment Finance Authority, to make sure that we're still able to pay sort of the, the obligations associated with that if it were originally passed. In addition to the $18 million, $1 million will come to the city in, to pay for backed, well, escrowed parking fees that the state owed us related to the Senate staff parking there. We spoke with the Finance Department at Committee of the Whole and that will alleviate $1.1 million annually for bond payments in the parking fund, so that's good news for the parking fund. And we will still preserve 228 spots for city employees and 50 spots for public use. So, the details of that arrangement are, are still being negotiated as far as who will operate the parking and all that, but we have to get the process moving. It is a lengthy process, involves quite a few steps. The next step will be our public hearing on the 28th. And then, at the Committee of the Whole, on the 11th of February, we will have second to last action on those, on the resolutions and then, that evening at council, if all goes well, we either reject or accept the sale offer and the mayor and the administration are set to close on the 15th if council approves. Is that right? That's right. So, I move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution to set the public hearing for the 28th. Are there any questions? Anything else that the mayor would like to add to this? Okay. All right, thank you. With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are, we are to the introduction of ordinances. The Committee on Public Safety introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances by amending Chapter 1610 Uniform Fire Code and Uniform Fire Code Standards. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
Councilmember Hussein.
So, what we're looking to do is to set a public hearing for the ordinance that would essentially be an amendment to our fire code. And what we're looking to do is, is to adopt Chapter 39 of the 2018 International Fire Code. As of now, we are operating under the 2009 International Fire Code. My understanding is that the city attorney's office is taking a look very closely at that fire code. But in the meantime, we actually had our fire marshal, Marshawn Blake, into public safety, I believe it was December 19th, and he explained that there is, in terms of Chapter 19, deals with processing and extraction facilities and I, I'm sure you know where I'm going with this. We have a new industry here in the city of Lansing, obviously with medical marijuana. And so, when you look at the processing centers, there are a, a number of processes that take place within these facilities and, and the, the fire department essentially wants to have a set of standards to which they can assess not only the applications, but also the inspections of said facilities. And so, this would, my understanding, allow them to have those set of standards in their toolbox. With that being said, again, the public hearing will be on the 28th. I'm sure that the Chair of Public Safety, Carol, Councilwoman, would, would potentially like to add, fill in the holes, if you will. Also, our city attorney, Jim Smearka, may want to weigh in on this as well.
I, I think, again, that Councilmember Hussein did a good job of explaining what this is. This is just one section of the code, but it, it explicitly deals with the medical marijuana and dealing with processing centers. And the reason that the fire department wants to move this along is because part of our process are fire inspections and things that have to happen as part of that. And so, they want the most current code available as they do these inspections. Does the city attorney have anything else they'd like to add?
No, I can't add anything to that except we are, it's for processing of marijuana and, and the extraction dangers and all that that happen. But the, we are going to be bringing forward the balance of the International Fire Code also. This is just to get the marijuana side off.
Okay, are there any questions? Vice President Spatafor.
This is more procedural. This is a, we're voting on the first reading and the public hearing?
No, we're just setting the public hearing. Okay, any other questions? I have a motion sets a public hearing for the 28th and seeing no questions, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign, passes unanimously.
Okay, we're to registration for speakers who want to speak on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back, so if you would like to address those items, please jump up as quickly as you can. We'll be collecting that momentarily. And with that, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we have letters from the city clerk regarding amendments of boards, commissions, and authorities.
Please don't file.
Letters from the mayor regarding special assessment role, Glennburn Commons Trash and Grass Abatement.
Public Service Committee.
Brownfield Plan Number 62 amended, Oliver Towers.
And that's Development and Planning.
Lansing Economic Development Corporation, Rio Town Project, Pablo's Mexican Restaurant.
Development and Planning.
The appointment of Robert Friling as an at-large member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Development and Planning.
Reappointment of Michael DeMardele as an at-large member of the Income Tax Board of Review.
Ways and Means and Turtle Auditor.
Sale of the Townsend Parking Ramp, TIFA Amendment Six.
Committee of the Whole.
Sale of Townsend Parking Ramp, except indeed from Lansing Business, should be Building Authority.
That also goes to Committee of the Whole.
Sale of Townsend Parking Ramp, Resolution Defusing Bonds.
Committee of the Whole.
Communications and Petitions. We have letters from the Liquor Control Commission, transfer ownership of 2018 STD/SDM licensed business, 3127 Turner Street, to Kajal Liquor, Inc.
General Services.
And transferring a 2018 resort in Class C SDM license, transferring that into the city from, to the address of 419 Spring Street and is transferring it from Branch Township in Mason County.
And that's General Services Committee.
An affidavit of disclosure, Timothy Mapley, Lansing Police Officer.
To the Ethics Board.
We are to remarks by council members.
Any remarks by council members? At, at this time, what we'll do is read into the record the council assignments for the upcoming year for the committees. We are also, at this time, reaffirming the descriptions of those committees that are in our council rules. So, with that, we have General Services Committee. Jody Washington will chair and Brian Jackson will vice chair and Carol Wood is a member. The intern, the Intergovernmental Committee, Brian Jackson is chair, Jeremy Garza is vice chair, and Kathy Dunbar is a member. The Public Service Committee, Peter Spatafor is chair, Kathy Dunbar is vice chair, and Jeremy Garza is a member. Personnel Committee is set by our rules, which has the vice president as chair, Peter Spatafor, Carol Wood as vice chair, is the president, a at-large member, which is Patricia Spitzley, and a ward member, which is Brian Jackson. Ways and Means, the chair is Patricia Spitzley, vice chair is Peter Spatafor, and member is Kathy Dunbar. The Development and Planning Committee is Adam Hussein as chair, Jeremy Garza is vice chair, and Jody Washington is a member. The Public Safety Committee, Carol Wood is chair, Patricia Spitzley is vice chair, and Adam Hussein is a member. Okay.
All right, we are to remarks by the mayor.
Any comments from the mayor? Okay.
Okay, public comment on city government-related matters. We have Stephen Kokolka and then Loretta Sanaway.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving me this three minutes. To me, it seems like it's an exciting time since just last week. I made a, I had a lengthy conversation with my, my, with Councilmember Garza about our cell side cleanup efforts and revitalizing the cell side. And then, right after that phone conversation, I made a trip over to Logan Square and I noticed that there was a lot of, a lot of activity going on. Well, there's a new owner there. So, Logan Square now with this new owner and he's highly motivated and he's moving right along with, with trying to rent out all the space there and I, he's got some people that are really interested in moving in there. He's fixing the roofs, he's doing a lot of outside fixtures, like fixing the pavement, the parking lot, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm excited about that. I'm sure everybody else is as far as the cell side goes and the, the city of Lansing. The other thing that, you know, and I was part of that too, I contributed a little bit with my business because I cut trees down and he had some tree removal that he needed done and I did that for him too. So, the other thing that I was going to mention was, the only disheartening part about being on the cell side, and I mentioned that to Garza, is the amount of trash that's everywhere, like on the corner of Washington and, and, and homes, right there, where that new storage facility is going to be that you guys passed to approve for them to have the storage units inside where the old roller skating rink used to be, I think, years ago. And, and today, coming, coming into the city, coming into 496, just, and, and you can't rightly ask citizens to clean up the side of 496 because it seems like it'd be kind of dangerous, but the trash that you see coming in the city, you know, like they were talking about how the, they want, you know, the approach of coming into the city, like the landmark of the hotel that they're going to build, we, we need to like start, like I keep saying, from the bottom up. We, you know, like, first thing people are going to notice when they're coming into our city is like this trash, it's like, what's, what's going on with this trash? And I mean, I know it seems like it's a broken... And I mean, I know it seems like it's a broken record, I keep repeating it, but the less I see of trash on the, it seems like the more ideas can come in a better way to me. You just have to start from the bottom and move up. And that's all I'm asking of the city council, if they can make phone calls to certain people, to certain departments, to see if we can't get 496 cleaned up a little bit. Maybe the corner of Holmes and Washington cleaned up a little bit in that area. Because I'm keeping LeGrand and MLK right there clean, myself. So we ain't got to worry about that, I'll take care of that. And that's all I have tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Just keep moving forward, Lansing. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway and then Remedios Robinson.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Jeremy Garza. He went out with code compliance one day recently, and he spent the whole entire workday going around looking through the second ward at areas that were in violation or in need of repair, things that needed to be cited and rectified, including one of those was the cemetery at Mount Hope, where somebody had taken it upon themselves to dump construction debris in the back corner of the southwest end of the cemetery. And Jeremy and the code compliance officer are making sure that sometime in the very near future that gets taken care of and gets removed from that location. But I wanted to thank him for taking the time to do that and to act on that on his own initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Remedios Robinson and then Michael Robinson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members, Mr. Mayor, my name is Mr. Majus Robinson, and I am a Citizens Ambassador for the city of Lansing in my effort to promote an open community meeting between Councilman Jackson and the resident of the Porter. Invite Councilman Jackson to, of the, of the part, of the Porter apartment, excuse me, tomorrow, 10:30 a.m. I requested the management of CCI to invite Councilman Jackson to this meeting. The request made last week with the management team was welcome and appreciated. Councilman Jackson had expressed a desire to meet the president for the Porter apartment in an open dialogue and scheduled to attend a community meeting. I printed flyers and passed them out to the resident of the Porter where I also live. Today, I was summoned to the manager's office and was berated in my efforts in coordinating this community meeting after it had been approved. The manager and server coordinator both stated that certain residents that had bullied past residents had demanded that Councilman Resident, that Councilman, Councilman Jackson be prevented from attending as well as other members of the city of Lansing government. The management team at the Porter apartment also stated that contact was made with those invited to this community meeting, and that such attendance by members presenting the different department of the city agreed that Lansing Citizens Ambassador Robinson effort were without merit, and that even the Lansing Police of Community Affairs Officer agreed that such an effort by the Citizens Ambassador was pointless, and that the, that the helping in the, that, I was, hold on. That the Lansing Ambassador have no real responsibility in participating or helping in the Porter apartment community meeting at this point. The management team of the Porter apartment threatened to invoke a list of violation against me as both the Citizens Ambassador of Lansing and as a resident of the Porter apartments. I have spoke to Councilman Jackson and will work to attend another community meeting at the Porter apartments so that the law-abiding resident can voice the concern and not be bullied to remain silent by those that assist and promote bullying at the Porter apartments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Robinson.
Wow. I don't know if I can beat that one. I trained her well. Mayor Shore, President Wood, council members, I did attend the meeting with Remy. And I can tell you right now, she was blasted. They tore into her for just a simple community meeting, which they had scheduled and given approval to have Councilman Jackson attend. They went 180 degrees on her today and said that not only had they called the different offices at the city of Lansing, but that they also had consulted with the Lansing Police Department Communities Affairs Officer, who stated that the Citizens Ambassadors were quite meritless and pointless. So they basically told her that from this point on, if Councilman Jackson or anybody is invited to a community meeting, it must be under their control and under their program. And they also told her that if she did pursue this without their approval, which there's nothing that prevents a citizen at the Porter from having a meeting, that they would issue her a lease violation for eviction. But they didn't address it to the resident, they addressed it to the Citizen Ambassador. So I guess we have a situation now where we have somebody trying to write a new playbook out here of stopping the good efforts that the mayor has set up with the Citizens Ambassadors through the academy. And those people went through the academy to learn how to mentor and help people out and ask for the help, to be the eyes and ears of Lansing. Now we have the management at the Porter saying, not on our watch. If this happens again, you're out of here, and that's the way we're going to run this. We're going to run this not as an apartment complex, but as a senior assisted living home where we run the show and you don't have a say in it. And that's pretty sad, because there's still compliances there. They wanted to meet with the Councilman Jackson to show pictures of leaks still prevailing in the apartments. Even Remy was going to show cracked tiles in the bathroom, leaks overhead in our bathroom, a window that fell out of our front window. But they have an excuse not to fix it. So now we have a Citizen Ambassador trying to do the right thing, and she's getting squashed by the management because they don't believe in the system and what she stood for. Thank you, folks, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Okay, with that, and again, the city council offices and the city is closed on the 21st in celebration of Martin Luther King Day. With that, we are closed, adjourned.
Madam President, it said on TV tonight, tonight at council, a new fire chief was going to be named.
For those who are still here, we did point to Fire Chief Michael Mackey.
Michael Mackey.